Like to call the meeting to order and the world. Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here.
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner Andrews. Commissioner Mandel. Okay. Commissioner Burgess.
Here.
Okay, three of four, one, two, three, four, we do, okay, so we have a core. That's great, okay.
Would you like me to reach out to Cynthia?
That would be great.
She's all right? Yeah, I'll do it right now.
Okay, thank you. I'll do that because we're gonna, um, I'll announce it now, but just wait a couple of minutes to see if she can join us, that we're gonna convene into an executive session. To meet, um, legal with, with legal counsel to discuss potential litigation. Um, pursuant to R C W forty-two, twenty-three, point one, one, zero. I hope that's enough. I'm gonna evaluate complaints and charges brought against the public officer. Or, or employment employee pursuant to another law. Um, and then Jason, you're gonna put us in breakout sessions, right? The breakout session? And stop recording?
Uh, yes, if you just let me know what time you would be back in.
So, um, I know there was a. Maybe thirty minutes? Would suffice? So, okay, we would be back.
Okay.
Well, if Cynthia joins us, I would be able to put a ring there.
Yeah, I will, I will stay on to make sure that, that whoever else commissioners come in, then I will put them in that room.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. So I guess we can go into executive session now at twelve oh three and, um, come back up at twelve thirty-three. Twelve thirty-four. After taking no action in the session, um. So new business, the board will now consider items of new business. And state what those items are. Um. We would like to. Consider and approve. Um, employment transition agreement.
Yeah, I will make, uh, I will make the motion to approve the transition agreement between the Everett Housing Authority and Major Galloway.
I'll second that.
Take a vote with all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Those against? Okay, already, then that goes forward. Thank you. So next on the agenda is public comment, and I'd like to call for any public comment. And let that person speak if there isn't.
Uh, just to be clear, uh, Madam Chair, is, uh, I am no longer needed and I can be excused?
Correct, thank you.
Thank you all, be well.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment? Doesn't appear to be so. So next is communication. So we normally have a report for the resident council, but it doesn't look like we have any today. And then are there any other communications? Okay. Not hearing any, let's move to the executive director's report. And I'd like to give the floor to the Director of Policy, Janina, to give us, um, the staff's, uh, report regarding the office reopening.
Thank you Chair Smith and Commissioners. Um, so I have a quick slide deck that I'll go through for the group today, just to give everyone an update. This is following up on the discussion from our most recent board meeting where the commissioners indicated to staff that they, uh, wanted staff to provide an update on the plans for, uh, reopening the off, the Colby office to the public. All right, can everyone see my screen? Great. Okay. So I'll just preface this by saying that this is a modified version of the presentation that we used at our most recent, uh, reopening worker planning meetings. Um, so I'm gonna start with a little bit of background for commissioners. Some of this may be information that you're already aware of. So as I think everyone is aware, um, all E H A offices, both at Colby as well as our property offices closed during the pandemic. Um, our property offices have reopened, um, I. However, the specific days and times that they're open is really dependent on when staff are available in those offices. Um, some of our properties are smaller and they have staff that rove between different properties, and so they don't always have a staff person there every single day. Um, or, you know, a management staff member. Um, I think it's also important to point out that, uh, the property offices, because those buildings are secure. And the property offices are behind those secure doors, they're really serving residents. So they are reopened, but they're specifically serving people that already live in those properties, kind of on a walk-in basis. And so if someone is a new applicant, they would have to make an appointment. Um, to contrast that, the Colby office is currently open by appointment only and, um, so that. We don't have a way at Colby to differentiate when people walk in the door, whether they're coming in as a current participant. Or, you know, as someone who's interested in housing or has a, a topic related to their application. So regarding reopening, uh, staff had begun planning reopening late last year in Q three of this last calendar year. And we had had some initial meetings and I've been working really closely with Chris on this because, as I think you're all aware, Chris supervises the staff that provide our frontline customer service at Colby. Um, we expanded the work group, uh, early this year, you know, as senior staff discussed, um, the progress and, you know, the feedback from the board. We thought it would be helpful to encompass both Colby and our property offices so that we can have kind of a consistent plan, um, for. You know, not only the hours, but also how we message those to residents in the public and also to other staff. Since, as I said, the property offices lack sort of consistency around when each of those offices are open or when there might be staff on site. So the planning work group includes staff from a variety of different departments, um, from the housing trade background department, which, you know, serves a lot of the folks that come to Colby since that's kind of the primary worksite for the H C V team. Housing management, uh, human resources, uh, as there's a representative from human resources that serves on the safety committee, and so that was, um, the context in which, uh, she was asked to participate. Uh, we have a representative from the finance team, um, myself, uh, and Chris and Heather from the policy and innovation department also serve. So the work group, uh, is currently meeting twice monthly. And, uh, the work plan that the group has for the upcoming period of time is to start by identifying our goals for reopening the offices. The, the resources and elements that are needed to reopen safely. And then with that in mind, developing a plan and schedule for reopening. Uh, the group will then oversee the execution of that plan and then will continue to meet for a period of time after the plan is executed to make any refinements that are needed to that plan. So I wanted to give the group, um, this is again, a little bit more context, uh, I think it's helpful to understand who it is exactly that we anticipate serving at the office. Because that informs the group on how best we can meet the client needs. Um. So as I said, this is basically the presentation that I gave to the work group as background for them. So, um, as you may be aware, uh, my department is responsible for handling all of the incoming emails that come into our info and applications email addresses. As well as all of the messages and calls into our main phone line. So I analyzed all of those contacts that came in during a one-week period in October. With the goals of determining who's contacting us, what are they looking for, you know, and then figuring out based on that, you know, what resources do we need to be able to serve those folks and meet their needs? So, uh. The folks that are in pink are people that are already served by E H A, folks that are in dark blue are people who are interested in housing through E H A, and then green represents, uh, landlords. So interestingly enough, we found that actually about sixty percent of the people that were contacting us were folks that are not already housed with E H A, but they're actually people who are looking for housing. And that's a mix of folks who are either already on our waiting list or who are reaching out because they are looking for housing assistance or maybe want to join a waiting list. So in terms of the reasons why folks are contacting us, um, for folks that are currently served by E H A, one of the most common reasons they're trying to contact us is because they're trying to reach their certification specialist or their property manager. Um, because the way that the voucher program is staffed, folks, sometimes when there's caseload changes, the staff person that serves that client changes. And so if someone has worked with someone in the past, um, they're not sure who their current person is, they will contact. You know, either our main voicemail or email, um, to try and figure out who they're supposed to contact. Sometimes folks, um, if they don't get a response right away, um, from their person, if the person is out sick or on vacation, they'll start reaching out, you know, to other lines of communication to try and get an answer to their question more quickly. Um, we do have folks sometimes that are dissatisfied with the answer that they got from the staff person that they're working with at E H A and they're looking for a different answer. Um, we get folks that are looking for help with their, um, interview process. And we also get folks that are looking for status updates. So, um, what during the reexamination process. Um, there's a point when the staff contacts the participant and tells them to do their side of the process, so they have to provide, you know, their in householded income information. Then the ball's back in the housing authority staff's court. Um, but because of the processes and the way that we work, you know, a few weeks out, sometimes once staff get that paperwork back, they don't immediately turn to that paperwork because they're still working on paperwork that they've received previously. So sometimes people, um, are very, trying to be very proactive. And will follow up if they don't get a response from the housing authority within a couple of days. Um, in terms of applicants. Uh, I would say a lot of the folks that are reaching out are looking for a waiting list status update. Um, often they're in pretty dire circumstances and they want housing, you know, as soon as possible. Um, sometimes they've been on the waiting list for a year or two and, you know, they think maybe by now they'll be close to the top of the waiting list. Um, we are unfortunately do not provide specific position numbers to folks that are on our waiting list, and we do that for a couple of different reasons. One is because it gives people a false sense of when they will be housed. So if we say, well, you're number three hundred on the waiting list, um, it makes it seem like, you know. That sounds like it's gonna be a while, but if the property has more units or if the folks who, um, you know, the, that live at that property tend to turn over more frequently. Then that will speed up more quickly, right? So that section eight voucher program, we have, you know, al- almost thirty-seven hundred vouchers, right? So the time that. It moves to the waiting list might be different than a property that has twenty units. Um, and then the other reason is that in some cases we're actually filling units by lottery, you know, that's something that we've started for some of our property waiting list and may do more in the future where. The, the date and time that you apply does not necessarily dictate what your position is on the waiting list. Um, in terms of other reasons that applicants are contacting us, um, often they're trying to update their contact information, sometimes they're having tech issues. Logging into our rate cafe system, um, or sometimes folks have reached the top of the waiting list and they have questions or need help about, you know, what's in step in the process. And that could either be our voucher waiting list or, you know, some of our property waiting lists. Um, and then for the folks that are looking for housing, um, we had a lot of inquiries from folks who want to apply for housing, we get, we hear a lot about people who want to apply for section eight, which unfortunately are waiting lists for section eight. Has been closed generally since about twenty eighteen, um, we did do an opening last year specifically for our mainstream vouchers. Um, but that waiting list opening, I think, was only for about a month, um. So for the most part, our section eight waiting list has been closed for several years. Um, sometimes we have folks that need help completing applications for the list that we do have open. Um, we get a lot of folks who are about to be evicted or getting behind on their rent and they're looking for temporary rental assistance. Um, and then we do get some folks who sometimes they've lost their housing assistance, sometimes years ago. And, um, either they or maybe an advocate working on their behalf is reaching out, trying to figure out if there's a way that they can get their voucher. Depending on how long it's been and what the circumstances are, sometimes that's possible, sometimes it's not. All right, um, so now some contextual factors that the group is considering as, you know, we're making these plans. Um, as I said, we have seen that a significant number of the folks that are reaching out to us are really looking for housing assistance rather than being current E H A clients or participants. Um, what we've seen is that, uh, as all of the COVID rental assistance that was available in the community over the past few years has expired. Um, that there were more people reaching out to the housing authority looking for, you know, emergency rental assistance. Um, we've also seen that rents have continued to tick up. I don't know if you all saw the article in the paper today that. Um, about Snohomish County rents, that the average two bedroom rent is twenty-four hundred dollars a month. Um, we have also seen a pretty significant increase in the unsheltered homelessness count in our community. Uh, so last year, over a hundred additional people were counted as being, um, unsheltered homeless. And we're still waiting for the numbers from twenty twenty-four. We also, uh, know that the opioid epidemic and the lack of treatment, that's the factor in the unsheltered homelessness and also some of the challenges that we see kind of in the community and particularly around our office and the properties. Um, and there's a significant lack of homeless housing resources in our community. Um, we unfortunately, a lot of folks end up in this sort of Kafkaesque cycle where, uh, they contact us looking for housing assistance. And we refer them to two-on-one, which is the community information and referral line that's run by Volunteers of America. And two-on-one will refer them to us and to Hasko looking for housing assistance. And so. Because there's so limited resources, most of the folks that call two-on-one don't even get screened in to be part of coordinated entry because they don't meet the, the hi, very high bar that's required to get on the list. Um, and so folks end up in this situation where there's really nothing out there for them, which is really sad. So the group is also considering, and this is really specific to Colby, but I think the properties, um, also face some of these challenges. Um, as you all may be aware, the city adopted, um, a no sit, no lie ordinance for a few different areas around the city, one of which encompasses. A good area of downtown Everett and it ends about two blocks north of our Colby office. And one of the things that myself and my team observed after that ordinance went into effect was that we noticed an increase in unsheltered homeless folks. Um, smaller groupings or individuals kind of more predominantly in, in vicinity of our office. And I actually live near the other no sit, no lie in South Everett, and I noticed a similar phenomenon once that ordinance went into effect in my neighborhood as well. Um, we, and also in talking to our, uh, Deputy Director of Maintenance and Operations, who's part of this work group. And is very aware of the safety issues, uh, he's the one who coordinates our security guard, he supervises our office janitor. And the maintenance, he helps coordinate maintenance staff to Colby, um, when needed. That, you know, there's a few different factors in our neighborhood, um, that seem to be particular draws, so the jail is nearby, and so when folks get discharged from the jail. They will often congregate at like the bus stops or the seven eleven, that's right by the office. Um, there's also a significant number of vacant buildings in the immediate vicinity of our office, and so. Um, we've noticed that that can be, um, attract folks, uh, in the area. So. Uh, with all that in mind, these are factors that the work group is considering, um, you know, in figuring out how best to safely serve the folks. That do have legitimate purpose to come to the housing authority office and make sure that our staff and also the folks that are coming to our office can be safe. Um, and I think, you know, you're aware of Chris's recent attack that he experienced, and we've had some other incidents where staff have been confronted or. Um, intimidated by, uh, folk, street people, you know, in the vicinity of the office over the past couple of years. So next I'll just talk about the, what we do have to offer folks, um, who are coming to our, um, office or, you know, calling or emailing. Um, most of our waiting lists are closed, uh, right now we have two open waiting lists that have subsidized housing where income is based on rent. Um, those are both senior properties that serve people of sixty-two and older. And they have studio and one bedroom unit. So if someone is contacting us and they're looking for, you know, income-based housing and they're under sixty-two. Or they have a household that's larger than what a one bedroom can accommodate, we unfortunately don't have any waiting lists that are open that can serve them. Um, we have three, uh, senior, which is fifty-five plus. Unsubsidized waiting list where rent is not based on your income, so it's below market. But folks do have to typically, they have to earn at least twice the monthly rent to qualify. And so for folks that are just on social security or disability assistance, that's usually not enough to qualify for these properties. Um, and then we do have one all ages property, uh, which is Moderna Square, um, that also has some unsubsidized units where we haven't been waiting list. However. Um, I think it's helpful to understand that even though those properties don't have subsidy, they still do actually have pretty long waiting lists. It was very based on the property, but folks do typically wait, you know, multiple years before they're offered housing assistance. Um, so with all that in mind, um, kind of, you know, taking all these contextual factors into consideration, um. These are kind of the six, uh, key topic areas that the work group is, uh, pursuing, you know, in coming up with a plan. Um, there are some physical space considerations, you know, what is the lobby gonna look like, um, how are we gonna staff that? Uh, if we have additional staffing, you know, coming in the office to work with participants on certain days of the week. What does that mean for, you know, office space and parking at Colby in particular, um, because we are limited, you know, in the number of parking spots and offices that we have on site. Um, safety and security is a key concern. We also are, um, using this as an opportunity to further develop and train folks on different safety protocols. Emergency preparedness, uh, medical, those kinds of things. Um, also making sure that we have, you know, the appropriate safety equipment at the office. So, you know, there's been some conversations about whether we purchase A E Ds for the office, N R C, and those kinds of things. Um, also, you know, staffing is a, a related component of that. Um, we are aware that there will be budget implications for, uh, both one-time costs that will be required to potentially get the office prepped. Um, so we have, for example, we, you know, a lot of our work is conducted electronically. Um, historically, the office, we had a couple of older, now they're older desktop computers that were in the lobby. Um, the group has identified, or at least those of the smaller group that had already met, has identified. That it would be desirable to install kiosks, um, kind of like the ones you use if you check in in a medical office or the ones that we used to use, um. To vote back in the day, you know, on the, or in some states they use for voting, so those kiosks were with a touchscreen where you can. Um, for example, do your annual recertification and the housing authority staff could help you do that. Um, and those do have a cost, but, you know, we believe that the benefit of that would be, uh, worthwhile. And then finally, um, there's obviously a communications element to this because. We need to make sure that our participants and applicants and also, you know, other service providers that we work with in the community. Know when, you know, our offices are open and not open so that they can send folks and also, you know, as we open and close waiting lists. If people want to come to the office and, you know, submit an application, you know, planning for that, making sure that folks, uh, understand when those opportunities are available. So that is the presentation, um, and what I will say is, you know, this isn't kind of the end of the information that we are planning on giving to the board. Uh, we did want to give you all an update and share the work that the work group has started thus far. Uh, we do plan on giving, you know, regular updates, both as, um, there's more information to share and based on, you know, the board's requests, um. The work group has been tasked with developing that plan and schedule for reopening the office, keeping in mind all of these factors. Uh, we really wanted the work group to be the ones to, you know, have the ability to, uh, identify those elements, um, you know, based on that, what the staff know the needs are to be able to serve the clients that we serve. And so. Um, that's where we are in the process, and so we just wanted to share that information. I'm happy to take any questions or feedback on the. Presentation and, you know, anything that you would like me to report back to the work group.
I have a question, um, so. Before COVID, we were open. And, um, selected hours, have you guys factored? When you have a plan of where you want to be eventually. Right? Involving you things, but we managed four. Um, the, right? So, I mean, because I think that on the board, we were hoping for like an April plan. And, um, it seems like any. Longer than I. So was there a consideration of reverting to what we used to do? Where it was appointment only? Well, you know. But they could come into the office.
Yeah, Chris maybe is in the best position to share what happened, what was going, how the office was operating pre-pandemic, um. What I will say sort of just to, just to lay the groundwork is that. Um, we have a lot of the staff that used to be in the office doing that work, um, we do have many staff that are working remotely. Uh, we have identified, and I believe we talked about this in the previous meeting. A plan to revamp the way that we serve our voucher clients, um, with a, uh. Differentiation between the customer service piece and kind of the processing piece that happens on the back end. And we're in the process of rolling that new plan out, but it doesn't, you know, it requires us to hire staff and train staff. Um, and Kristen Kane is, you know, the department director with, uh, primary oversight for that plan. Um, Chris, I don't know if you wanted to talk more about sort of where, where we were and what. Um, what has changed in terms of our staffing, you know, compared to when we were open to the public?
Yeah, I can give it a shot, but it looks like Commissioner Burgess raised his hand, so I, you want me to go first? Um, yeah, up until we closed in March of twenty twenty to the public, um, we were open Monday through Thursday, um, eight AM to eleven. Uh, AM and then, um, one PM to, I believe, four PM. Um, at that time, we had, uh, someone who had been at the agency a long, long time, and that was Julie, and, and she was very adept at being able to. You know, field incoming people, uh, answer phones and, uh, do that type of thing. If there was ever a disruption in the office, it fell on me to. Stop what I was doing and go deal with it. Um, in the intervening time, um, I, I think that, you know, we, we definitely gained a lot of complexity to our programs. The need out there is so much greater. Um, you know, I anticipate we will have a lot of people coming in off the street, um, you know, either. Wondering if we can help them or not really having a mission to be there, just, uh, simply wanting to. Use a phone or, or, you know, do something. Um, so I, I think that, you know, we, we really need to have something to be able to offer people when, when they do come. To the Colby office and the way we're currently staffed, um, you know, with Rita at the front desk, um, a temp who is, you know. Uh, assists her and also does some other projects, um, and me who. I have many roles at this agency and, and I don't want to be spending my time. Constantly interrupted and going up to the front to try to help people, um, I also have, you know, just personally. You know, the person who attacked me, I was not injured. Um, but it's not okay for people to be kicking you when you're trying to come into the office and, you know, I don't think. I mean, I, you know, I have a pretty high tolerance for dealing with people. Um, but I really am shocked by the way the downtown around our office has, has deteriorated and that we're, we're going to need to be. Able to deal with that. And, and with our current staffing model, I, I just don't, you know, see that as being possible. I, I'm not. An advocate of just setting a date and then rushing as fast as we can. To try to accommodate that, um, especially with what I'm, you know, I, I mean, I don't know. How much longer I'm going to be able to work full-time. I'm on the East Coast right now. My father goes on hospice tomorrow. Um, I, I, I just think, you know, we, we really need to have a good plan in place before we open the office. And I've, I've probably been too long-winded, but that, that's, those are my observations.
Did you have a security officer back there?
No, we never had a security officer, um, we had some incidents sometime, I've. Had a man give me a long knife and, you know, different things like that, but we, we never had a security officer. Um, I think at one time there was someone who posed a significant enough threat where we had an armed officer sit in our lobby for a week. Um, because someone had threatened this staff member. But, um, other than that, um, no, we did not have security at that time, um, but again, things were very different than, um, than they are now.
Chris, that was a, that was fantastic. It was a great answer and explanation, and it makes perfect sense. Um, I hear exactly what you are saying. It raises a lot of concerns. If people cannot work and come to work because they are afraid of their safety, their public safety. That needs to be a, another conversation. That needs to be a conversation with folks throughout the city. We have, we have a job to do and we have people to serve, and if. Folks are afraid to come in and serve those folks who need help. Because they're being hit, they're being kicked, uh, they're be, having knives pulled on them. What is going on? Like? I, I. Right? Um, I'm sorry that happened, man. I, I think we could use tech, technology, um, to help in the interim. If you go to any of the elementary schools, um. Throughout the area, middle schools, they have locks, they have. uh, they have cameras, you're able to let folks in uh, after seeing them, after, you know, um, there's, 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 there's ways to protect the housing authority. However, that should not fall on the shoulders of, of you, Chris, or uh, the, the folks at the front. That's, that's not your role. You, you have a job to do. And protecting folks and protecting the agency, you know, deciding who can come in who cannot come out, that, that's not one of them. So I think there's an answer here, and I think there's a, a I think there's a way that this can happen. So, yeah, I'd like to hear, hear more, more opinions.
Well, we do have um, a meeting coming up on the floor. Um, maybe we can take a larger section of that to uh, review, like, keep the conversation. Are there?
Chris, Kristen Kane has her hand up.
Sorry.
Hey, thanks, yeah. I just wanted to also contribute a little bit of information here. Um, so for our current HCV clients, they can make an appointment and come and see someone inside the office. So we do still offer that. Um, and as Janina mentioned, we are revamping our staffing model for the HCV team. And we are currently understaffed, but we're on the verge of hiring a new cohort, you know, of entry level program specialist position. I mean, the idea here would be that these positions would be a primary customer service support. Um, and our goal would be that these positions could once they're fully, once they're onboarded and fully trained, could move to answering live phones. And so right now, when someone calls, they leave a voicemail and they get called back. And based on current staffing, you know, it can take a while for people to get a response. And so, you know, prior to the office reopening, we already have a plan in place to decrease our turnaround times for being able to provide um, our clients and our applicants with service over the phone. Um, so I think for, in terms of our programmatic, you know, um, response and customer service, there's other avenues that we're exploring, um, that can be implemented on a quicker timeline than the larger scale, like office reopening initially.
Yeah, and just, just to follow up on what Commissioner Burgess mentioned, um, in terms of like, kind of the technology piece of it, that is actually one of the areas that the work group is working on. Uh, we have installed those same types of devices at a number of our properties where, you know, you have like an intercom type system. Um, we also, right now, when folks need to come in and out of our office, either they have, there, we have one door that has a keypad, um, which we, which is right now emergency exit only because we've had some issues where that door doesn't lock properly. Um, and it may be repaired now, I'm not sure. Um, and then our other doors all just use old traditional keys. And so the incident where Chris was attacked was while he was standing there putting his key in the door, waiting to turn his key. Um, one of the modernizations that I believe strongly that we need to make is to put badge entries, both at all of our external entries, but also we have some areas right in our office, you know, when you walk into the lobby, we have two doors that go into sort of the secure back office areas, and those have keypads on the doors as well. That creates some challenges in terms of like, if someone, you know, needs to go in and out of that with a staff person, you know, how do you secure, make sure that only people with access can do that, you know, making sure that, you know, if someone leaves the agency, we have to change those codes. Um, there's a lot of complexity, you know, to managing that from a safety perspective. And so um, part of what we need to do is make sure that our uh, back office areas are secure. So that, you know, for example, we have client files in that area, and if someone were to get into those secure areas, they could get, you know, private client information, which would be, you know, a pretty severe cha, uh, violation for the agency, you know, from an audit perspective. So these are the, the specific things that the work group is working on. Um, we will be, you know, needing to identify those systems, procure them, um, figure out how we're going to pay for them, because there will be a cost for that. Um, and then also coming up with the protocols in place. And so that's where that's, that's the work that this work group is specifically doing. Um, and unfortunately, you know, as a government agency, it does take time to uh, procure systems and those kinds of things.
Uh, Commissioner, I, I have a question. Is it possible that one of us, um, one of the commissioners can sit on that reentry committee? I think there are a lot of solutions that we can handle now and um, instead of waiting until the plan is complete and then trying to put those things in place and then thinking about opening the doors after all of those systems are in place. Uh, if, if it's possible, and I don't know if I'm overstepping, but I would volunteer to be on that committee. Um, I've done this work before, and I think that it's really important that we get these doors open. And so I am not um, I am not, um, yeah. I'm, I'm really, yeah. Anyway, I want to volunteer my time to help with that because I think it's important that we meet um, wait of opening sooner than later.
And I for one would not want to be one to mess around with Commissioner Andrews.
George! Uh, you're, that's hilarious. No, I, but I, 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 and no, George. No, I
I don't mean, I certainly don't mean that derogatory, believe me.
I know, I bless, bless you. But I, I think that there's, I think there are things that we can do in phases, but we definitely need to uh, work on getting folks back to work. And I agree with Commissioner uh, with Chair Smith that we should look at security. And if, if security is the issue, that's the first thing that we should work on to make sure that we have security so that folks can come back in the office.
Here, here.
So, this will obviously be a topic we add to next meeting to continue. Um, but for now, if there isn't any more questions on the presentation, we'll move forward.
Hey, Janina, thank you very much for that report, though. Fantastic, and, and it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'll, I'll say thank you also because it gives some perspective on what's happened in the past. And um, so I appreciate it as well.
Okay, next part of our um, meeting is the approval of the minutes held on, the meeting was February fifth. Hopefully everybody got a chance to review them. So I'd like to call for a motion to approve that.
For approval.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Next, we'll move to the consent agenda. And um, hopefully Chris is okay if I do it all in one, but we are looking at um, section eight payments for the months of October, November, and December of twenty twenty-three. And then the summary of vouchers for the months of October, November, and December of twenty twenty-three. And then acceptance of an amended executive director report on write-offs and tenant account receivables. So everybody have a chance to hopefully go over that information, so I'd call for a motion.
I will make the motion. Motion to approve.
Okay. Consent agenda is passed. Um, next, we're gonna go over the individual items for consideration. And I'm sure there's somebody that it's going to, we're kind of review, like, the first one is number fifteen. If someone would like to, I think it's Jason? To present?
Hi, I, I'm not hearing you very well, Corin. Is it my turn?
Bobby, yes, it is you. Sorry about that. To go over the acquisition of Mariner Square and um, related pre-development activities, please.
Yeah, and I, I don't have a presentation today. Um, we did issue a memo and there is a resolution, and I will walk uh, everyone through um, the memo and resolution, if that's okay. Um, so I'm here today to discuss Resolution fifteen eighty-seven, um, which is in, in specific uh, related to the approval of Mariner Square uh, acquisition, um, and due diligence pre-development activities. Thanks, Janina. Um, this is a uh, uh, joint um, development uh, project with Snow Isle Library um, that was in, in encompassed in the May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three uh, MOU uh, that we s- signed and we discussed in the past. Um, this is a property in unincorporated South Everett, um, on the corner of one hundred and twenty-eighth uh, street southwest and Fourth Avenue West, which is uh, very near to the Mariner High School. Um, and it is uh, fronting um, Haskell. There are two elements of this resolution, um, that are of particular interest, I think, to the commissioners. Uh, one is related to the acquisition itself of the property. And then the second uh, part is um, just related to the pre-development activities. Typically in these processes, we receive we request uh, approval resolution, um, both for the acquisition as well as for pre-development. We will uh, be coming back to the board for approval for final closing and an omnibus resolution for financing and the start of construction, uh, once we proceed to that point. Um, the acquisition terms um, of this are a little bit different than, say, our last um, acquisition um, over at Ben Young, and a little more similar to uh, the acquisition process at Huntington Park. In this particular instance, um, we have been advised uh, by councils, really by both councils, uh, seller as well as our council, um, to proceed possession and use agreement, um, to acquire the property. In this particular instance, the possession and use agreement, um, has a couple uh, key features. Um, one of the features, it establishes a base price, which is just based and fixed on um, one of uh, the two appraisals uh, that we did for the property um, as a base negotiation price, uh, for which we'll place uh, those monies in eh, in escrow to execute the land transfer uh, within the terms of the possession and use agreement. And then, um, secondly, the possession and use agreement uh, has a legal framework for which to conclude negotiations over the purchase price. Um, this particular methodology is, is, is preferred, um, so that uh, land control um, can be gained by the housing authority so that we can initiate uh, the development for the execution of housing. And then uh, secondarily, uh, it still allows and provides comfort to the seller um, that there'll be further time um, to negotiate uh, final compensation for this. Um, and in that process, uh, should uh, compensation uh, not be mutually agreed to uh, by the date of June first, two thousand and twenty-four, which is a target settlement date, we would then uh, go into a mediation process. The reason for this methodology is, is a couple, couple, uh, one is um, the importance of land control and considering we have a partnership with Snow Isle, there's a lot of complexity in terms of two different partners trying to buy two different parcels, uh, for which we would then co-join those parcels for development. Um, the second part of that is a typical preference uh, on, on the side of the seller uh, to take advantage of certain um, um, tax and other uh, you know, benefits uh, through um, the threat of condemnation process similar to that that occurred um, over at Huntington Park. Um, from a, from a pre-development perspective, um, we have done some feasibility work in pre-development, um, prior, we've done some due diligence. Um, but we do expect um, to enter into uh, our typical uh, development process, which should include um, early, early phase conceptual uh, design and planning, and then a lot of due diligence and feasibility. Um, should, should this resolution be approved? Um, we anticipate there to be roughly two hundred plus units of affordable housing uh, delivered at the site. Um, just a reminder, in case some of you were not around for earlier uh, discussions in, in relation to this project. Um, Snow Isle has long um, coveted um, a project in the Mariner Community Campus area. They, for a long time, have led a, a lot of community discussions um, related to providing a central kind of community campus core in the Mariner area, which is unincorporated and has typically not received the attention or amenities that other neighborhoods uh, have received. Um, last year, we, we teamed up with them um, to try to move this concept forward. And uh, we're at a state where now we're ready to uh, close on the land acquisition. Uh, Snow Isle is very close to concluding their transaction. And uh, with approval of this resolution, we would then be prepared to move forward um, to the next stage, which would be conceptual design, and then move, move forward through our, our typical pre-development activities. Um, while we, we haven't yet uh, moved much further forward, um, because it's really dependent on uh, this acquisition process as well as Snow Isle's acquisition process. Uh, the big picture intent is that we would be able to start uh, construction in two thousand and twenty-six with the two thousand and twenty-eight completion. And we would expect to receive a lot of funding support um, from the county um, as well as uh, support from the state legislature. And uh, we're both excited and uh, very opportunistic um, about our opportunity to provide a significant amount of housing as well as uh, provide a kind of model prototype for library, community civic space and affordable housing in a TOD area. And I, I suppose I, I did forget to mention that this particular site location will be uh, very near um, to the proposed uh, Mariner Light Rail Station. Um, so excellent access to both transportation, to daily uh, amenities and necessities, close proximity to middle school and high school. Um, so we, we feel that this site is both uh, superb in terms of the services uh, that we as a housing authority would like to provide, um, but also as a contribution um, to a partnership with Snow Isle, which we would like to uh, further develop. Um, and we also feel it's an excellent opportunity um, to further engage with a, a wide variety of political stakeholders um, in a unique project type. Um, and with that, um, we are requesting a five million dollar not-to-exceed um, authorization, which will uh, take us uh, largely through pre-development. Uh, hopefully all the way through pre-development, should that not be sufficient, I will come back to the board, uh, requesting further au- authorization with further explanation of, of where we're at in the pre-development process. Um, and uh, with this adoption of the resolution, it authorizes the execution of documents. Um, it also includes um, both acquisition as well as the authorization to commence pre-development activities um, required to develop the property um, up to uh, financial closing and start of construction. So hopefully that's a fairly clear and concise explanation of where we are at in this Madonna Square, or I'm sorry, uh, our community campus acquisition and pre-development process. With that, uh, I'll wait questions. Thank you.
Yes, uh, Jason, I have a question. After having received some uh, mail from uh, Manny Mascarett at Haskell. And she, and she says, EHA and Haskell have a history of deference to each a, agency's jurisdiction. If either one of the purchased property in another's jurisdiction, they would notify other agency for informal approval. Is this something that we need to do? Is this something that we need to think about? Talk to me.
Uh, so I think there's two, two components uh, to that. Um, one is that discussion has already taken place. Um, followed a prior conversation um, with Haskell uh, related um, to our MOU with Snow Isle. Uh, I also went and met with um, Lois, uh, who is the executive director at Snow Isle and with Dwayne, um, to discuss uh, both the MOU uh, and the future acquisition. And so uh, we have already engaged uh, with Haskell on this subject. Um, and we will continue to communicate with Haskell. Um, our next steps really in communicating with Haskell would have been the completion of this acquisition, the initiation of pre-development activities. And, and verification of the commencement of pre-development activities. Uh, I am aware of that letter. Uh, I can say that I haven't received any communication from Haskell. Haven't received any calls. Haven't received any calls, no emails, so I was completely unaware of the context or of any of those comments therein. So.
And and my, my concern, and if if you want to call it that, is that. We, two agencies, Evha and uh Haskell. Are in the same business of helping people and doing the best we can for the people of our community. That we not be stepping toes on each other by anyone, anyone taking a step towards this purchase.
I have the same sentiments, Commissioner Perez. Well, I, I suppose all I can suggest is I went to great lengths um to have discussions with Dwayne at Haskell. Um, and with Lois um at Snow Isle. Um, I think one of the missing pieces in this conversation is Snow Isle's. Uh, own agency in choosing a development and agency partner in these development activities. Um, and moving forward. I, I, I feel like we've been very sensitive um to Haskell as relates to their concerns. Um, prior con- concerns communicated to us. Um, these most recent concerns, we haven't heard of, um, so it's very difficult. Um, for us to respond to things that we haven't been notified about, um nor have any. Awareness to until the receipt to this information just prior to this board meeting. Um, I certainly will reach out to Dwayne and have a conversation with him to try to further understand. Um, and you know what he considers uh his, his exposure. And I suppose another important point is this is also within our jurisdiction. Um, and so uh, to your point, I think there's a lot of space for us to work mutually towards the, the same goal. And uh, I will continue to communicate with Dwayne over at Haskell uh towards that end and. And and also uh ultimately, I think um have further conversations between ourselves. Snow Isle and Haskell, because this really is a three, three-way um discussion. Um, this, this, this is not just the Housing of Ever- Everett Housing Authority initiating a development action. In Mariner, this is the Everett Housing Authority responding to a request. From Snow Isle to participate in this activity for the Mariner Community Campus, which has been a uh longstanding um goal of the community. So hopefully, hopefully that answers your, your question, George.
Thanks. Thank you, Jason.
Rest much for it.
Well, I just wanna, just for clar- for clarity sake, Jason, so you're saying that you did communicate with them, that's, that's great. Um, they're saying. There's, there's more than one email out there that 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 did not take place and, and so like, it's kind of concerning, that's all. Um, not questioning you, I just.
Exactly.
These things have come to us and, and it's not just the one email that just dropped before this meeting. Um, there's, there's been some other correspondence. Um, so I, I guess I just. You know, when did those meetings take place? Um, like, you know, I mean, you, you're saying that Haskell was okay with this? Um, like. Talk to us a little bit more about that.
I think there's much deeper context uh that was in that letter that you received. Um, some of which I'm not comfortable touching on right now, as, as I hope you would understand. When we first issued the MOU, and I don't have the exact timing, um at some point uh. In, and I believe the summer of last year, uh, Dwayne reached out to me in an email, communicated. He was upset um based on discussions that his board member had had with him, who also happens to be. Um, a board member uh for Snow Isle or or participant with Sm- Snow Isle, I think, on their fundraising committee. So there is kind of a pollination um between those entities. Uh, they had discovered that uh we had um developed a relationship with Snow Isle to move forward with the development. Um, at that time, uh, Dwayne communicated his displeasure. Uh, I tried to talk with Dwayne. He did not show a willingness to have a conversation. I went out of my way to uh have a discussion with him uh following week at a, a seminar um that we all shared. Um, I reached out to him to try to engage and have a conversation. From that, um, I, I got agreement to meet with uh Snow Isle and Lois to have a dialogue about this issue. We had that meeting, the resolution of the meeting was that there was no issue. Um, that, that Haskell supported um this uh development activity and this partnership with Snow Isle. And the agreement I had with Dwayne was that, you know, moving forward, I would communicate with him. Um, at major milestones when we had activities and certainly um not in public with things that are sensitive of a transaction nature. And so from my perspective, we have kept our bargain or our agreement um from that point in time till now. Um, we work weekly with Snow Isle. Snow Isle is very deeply embedded in that Mariner community. They are really our. Our source um because of their long ties there and because they have a branch there. Um, we have heard nothing from, from Mariner in regards to this. We know that they're very sensitive to community interests and Haskell's interest in the area. Um, I know of no communication in which Haskell has communicated to Snow Isle. Um, any issues or opposition um to, to establishing a library and or affordable housing in those locations. So, you know, to be honest, I'm caught off guard today. Uh, I've received no communication, no notice. This is coming out, you know, call it a half an hour before the board meeting. And so the best I can do is tell you that um, I think the context is, 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 is a little more complex. Um, that was communicated um in that particular letter um that you're referencing. Um, I don't think that we have done anything towards to Haskell. I think what we are doing is moving forward in a partnership with Snow Isle with the intent to produce both a model prototype. Kind of library affordable housing project with civic space. Um, we're doing so in an opportunistic way to take advantage of the future light rail. And um, from my perspective, I'm very confused um at the positioning um that Dwayne has taken in communicating this. Uh, I'll be seeing him uh in the next day or so in the consortium's executive group meeting. I'll have a discussion with him and I will do my best to uh try to find uh a pathway. Which is a little more amenable uh than this one.
So seeing that we have a meeting next week on the fourth, um perhaps we could postpone on making a motion on this.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear, Corn.
Um, maybe I'll type it. Sorry, I don't know why you can't hear me.
I think if you just yell into that microphone.
Okay, can you hear me now? I, I think that we should postpone um making a motion on this until we have some more information and um. Um, all parties are in the same, same place. Does anyone have an objection to that right now?
I, I am an addition to that, uh Chair Smith. I think that it is important that the two boards. Have a relationship or conversation as well. We are, um, this seems to, I mean, I've heard this since I came on the board. But there seems to be uh some pieces missing. And I think with lack of having an executive director in place. We are missing the relationship piece. And regardless of whether we're taking, this is a great acquisition. I love the project. I support it. I love what Snow Isle's doing. I think it's a great thing. But I think um it's important that we have relationships established and mutual agreement. Um, before we move forward. So I would like to see perhaps some uh meeting of the two boards. As well as the meeting with the executive director, so that we are all, like, we live in the same space. We move in the same space. We need to make sure that we are on top of our relationships. Because that is, this is not um the first time that I've heard that we are not communicative. And it's important that we have this. This is my opinion.
Here, here.
We'll have some further conversation.
I once again couldn't hear that. Sorry, Corn. Is it just me?
You know, it's probably I mumbled too. Um, so let's postpone this until we have further conversation. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask a very quick question, which is, what is the intended timeline? It.
I don't think we have one yet because we are just hearing this as well. Is there a time sensitive that you have to have this signed?
I don't know that there's a specific date, but I would point out that yes, this is a very sensitive transaction. And I think if there's long delays, I'm not su- sure what the seller's behavior would be, so.
Who, who is the seller? I don't even like, I heard about this, not even knowing that we were involved in the partnership. So I don't know where, like, I don't know if I, if it was before I came on. But this is a first that I'm hearing that we are in full partnership and all, so I don't know. I'm, I'm still learning. So who's the seller?
Uh, seller is just an individual owner of that particular piece. Um, the seller. Um, I've never met, talked to the seller. We traditionally don't talk to the sellers. We talk through council. So our council has been in discussions with their council. Um, Snow Isle did have kind of precedent conversations with them um prior to us being involved in the project.
Well, do you keep in mind we do have a meeting on the fourth and we have a meeting on the twenty-fifth? Okay, let me talk into my mic. We do have a meeting on the fourth and we do have a meeting on the twenty-fifth next month. Um, Jason, if you have like some further concerns, maybe we could take it offline out of the meeting. So.
That'd be wonderful. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Much appreciated.
All right.
And can we move forward with setting um with agreeing to uh meet with the. Snohomish County Housing Authority Board as well, or is, can we just do that? Um, do we need a motion to, to do that?
I don't think we need a motion because that's part of the. Um, but Chris, you might want to correct me.
I'm sorry, I, I, wa- was that directed at me? I just can't hear.
Oh, I don't know why. Sorry, guys. Um, I don't think that we need a motion to, like, just have a meeting with the. Parties involved.
I think there's kind of two parts to this. It sounds like the board is tabling the resolution. And, and so you'll want a motion and you'll, you'll want a second on that. Um, I am unfamiliar how it would work to have, you know, the, the two boards get together. I mean, that would be a, that would be a meeting. I've never heard of such a thing, but not saying it can't happen, so. But I think the main thing is, is to uh table the resolution, get a motion and a second on that. And then as far as the second piece goes, um, that's something that staff will just have to follow up on and, and figure out.
Ready then. Thank you for the clarity. So do I have a motion to?
I would move to table the resolution.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
I'm opposed. I'm sorry.
I, I wanted to have, have a little discussion before we finish, but I just want to know, table it until when? And I think we should also state that until Jason has a meeting with um Dwayne. And then we have a meeting with the board. Do, can we make that amendment?
Um.
Or until the board is fully satisfied with the communication between the two.
If, if I may, Chair Smith, we don't think we need to do, and we tabled it, so we can bring it back whenever you want.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Commissioner Andrew?
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, and if, if possible, it would be nice if it was three board members from, three m- maximum board members from each. Haskell and Everett Housing Authority, so we don't run into a.
Public.
Public me- meeting stuff.
Okay. All right. Um, let's go to the second um consideration, item for consideration, which is Resolution fifteen eighty-eight. On approving group medical, dental and life insurance policies. And I believe uh when we blame to introduce.
Yes, I believe that Mr. Neblet put me down as the person presenting this as in prior years. Um, hopefully this will be a much simpler conversation than the one that, that uh y'all just had. Uh, so I like to keep things easy for you guys. Um, this is just, um, we're asking um the board to approve the renewal. It's a, it's a large contract. It's over two million dollars for employee benefits, so we always like to have the board approve this. Um, our benefit plans for the coming year. You may remember that our benefit year begins on April first, unlike ninety-nine percent of the rest of the world. We did that because we were um assured long ago that it would give us more attention from the um. Insurers, I'm not a hundred percent sure if that's the case, but um. This year, we are recommending to the board that, that we select or choose Cigna. As our continued health insurance provider. That's um the organization that's been our provider for Linda. Probably remembers long better than I do, at least three years. Um, last year, they actually had a decrease in premium. This year, there's an increase. So we're back up to about the same level as we were two years ago. Um, this seven percent increase will cost the agency about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And uh, the, we, this also includes our dental coverage. Dental coverage was, had no increase. We'd like to keep it with Cigna. We had a proposal from Delta Dental. There, they had two proposals. One of them was quite a bit more. Than what Cignas would have been, and the second one had extremely limited providers. So based on the results of the employee survey that we did last fall, I believe, it may have been in November. We know that changing providers, uh especially for dentists, seems to be a big, like, please don't do this to us from our employees. Um, and because of the favorable terms from Cigna, we'd like to recommend that we continue to do that, doing that. Um, and there's no changing cost for the agency. We pay a hundred percent of dental insurance currently for our employees. Based on a very old collective bargaining agreement from years ago, it, it looks at inflationary adjustments. And EHA still pays a hundred percent. Uh, the other two policies are our life insurance policy that EHA pays for, for our employees. That's the three point one percent increase in cost, so it'll be a little, I think it was going to be somewhere around seven or eight hundred dollars, less than a thousand dollars for the year. Um, the other um benefit plans will continue to offer. Those are um optional and the employees cover them. So our recommendation is to accept this. Oh, and I forgot to mention that um the director, Linda Hostin. Has been in contact with the unions and we uh and notified them of this situation. And I believe it got no response from them.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? It looks like the motion. Well, we're finally to adjourning the meeting, everyone. It's been a long one. Um, the next scheduled board meeting is maybe March fourth at noon. And um, it looks like we have a couple of items that are continuations from this meeting. Uh, reopening plan and uh maybe an update from Jason. Um, of the one motion that we tabled. Um, but if there's no objection to close the meeting, I'd like to call a motion.
May, may I have a, I, I've, I'm sorry, you all. I, I really, I, I appreciate every person that works for. Um, the Housing Authority and I want to just say that I'm really working to operate. In the best interest of the staff and the, and this, the community that we serve. My question is to Janina, when does the um reopening committee meet again? I'd love to get an invitation.
Yes, Commissioner Andrews, let me look at my calendar, so we met last week, so we will be meeting again. Next week, and I can add you to that calendar invite, we meet at nine AM on Thursdays, every other Thursday.
Okay, great, thank you, and don't believe George, I'm really nice.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, move to, I second.
Aye, aye.
Okay, we are officially adjourned, thank you everyone for your time.
Have a good day, everybody.
You too.
Bye.